Twilight Zone. There's some feedback.
Happy Halloween.
All right, good evening. It is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We might have a little feedback going on here. All right, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Dr. Mizik, has this meeting been posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We will rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call will show that all five members are present. I probably should've said that first. We have some commendations this evening, so I've got a few friendly faces out in the crowd tonight. The Board of Education would like to recognize the following local businesses for supporting our high school students through youth apprenticeship programming. Those would be Harbor Village, Daniel Callenberger Video and Motionography, Hyatt Pharmacy, Walgreens on Seventy-Sixth Street at Cold Spring Road, and the Vander Blumen Group. On behalf of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, my fellow board members and myself, thank you for your participation. And now I'd like to turn it over to Tom Herman to make a couple of remarks.
Thank you, everyone. For those of you that haven't met me already, I'm Tom Herman. I work for Greendale High School, or the district, as well as the four other districts that are in our consortium. And one of the things that I do is be in charge of our youth apprenticeships. And that is where students in their juniors and senior years go off and do experiential learning based on something that is interesting to them in their career. So what I wanted to do with these awards is just acknowledge the fact that there's a couple of our local businesses that have really made a huge impact on our students' lives. Not only have they given them an opportunity to learn some technical skills that will help them long-term, but also just have given them some opportunities to make some money and be around adults that are doing similar work that they plan on doing. And most importantly, and I cannot stress this enough, it's the mentorship component that goes with youth apprenticeship. All of these people have impacted our students' lives. They've gone above and beyond in terms of just getting to know our students and getting to understand kind of the whole mission behind youth apprenticeship. They're people that are absolutely invaluable. They've shared of themselves kind of their own career paths. They've opened the students' eyes to, here's what these industries can do for you. And so I can't really thank them enough, but this token of appreciation, these awards, hopefully will do some measure of that. First and foremost, I'd just like to have Aaron Gallenbeski stand up. He is the pharmacist from Seventy-Sixth and Cold Spring. He, when we first started this youth apprenticeship kind of recruitment and getting things going, he had Eve Weber, who was a student from Greendale, who came aboard and became one of his first farm techs. And thank God for Eve, it worked out really well. And thank God we had Aaron, because he's a fantastic mentor. And it has just flourished from then. You know, over the last four years, we've now been in ten different Walgreens, and we have almost twenty students that are farm techs within Walgreens that are pursuing their healthcare career. Now, not all of them are gonna be pharmacists. Some of them just want the patient care that comes with dealing with medically fragile people that have, you know, need medication. But there again, Aaron has talked to these students. You know, when I just talked to him right now, he still knows people that don't work for him anymore and what they're doing. You know, we can't ask for more than that. So thank you very much, Aaron, for that. Next up, we have from the Vander Blumen Group, we have Mr. Glenn Brannon. He is one of the gentlemen that keeps reminding me that we're batting a thousand, you know, with the YAs that we send him, which is both really cool, but it's also a little daunting, you know. But, you know, they do tax attorney work, which is pretty high-level stuff. But if our students can get through Accounting One and Accounting Two, you know, Accounting One, this is what I'm learning. I'm an English teacher. Accounting One is something that, you know, you can kind of get through. Accounting Two, that's where the rubber hits the road. And when they get through that, if the student gets through that, let's say by the end of their junior year, then what do they do? You know, what can we offer them? You know, obviously, we can send them off to college. But if they can go work for Glenn and his crew and actually get their fingers dirty doing actual accounting work, that is the marriage of what we're doing in school with the real world, and that is fantastic. So definitely like to highlight Glenn as well. Just down the block, we have Harbor Village. And Debbie Barth is sort of a double-threat gal for us. Not only is she the executive director over there, but she also is the department, you know, the chamber president. So I've got to know her through the other chamber businesses. With her tonight is Nikki Palmer, who's in charge of all the culinary aspects of what happens down there. We've had several different students, several from Greendale, that have gone over there and started their healthcare career. And they've learned, you know, what it takes to be compassionate, what it takes to really work with people that, you know, you can make their day. Okay, you know, these are very medically fragile people, but, you know, by supplying them their food, you know, asking them about their day, maybe even help feeding them in some cases. It really, you know, puts in the kid's mind, do I really want to do this work? Okay, 'cause this is really the crux of going into nursing or being a doctor or whatever, is really, can you take care of these people? So I definitely want to highlight them tonight, our Harbor Village people. And last but certainly not least is Dan Callenberger. He's not only a Greendale parent, he also went on the Greendale trip to see the Rose Bowl Parade and did a fantastic video for that. He's spoken on our career panels during AV Arts and Communication Day. And he just recently helped us make a youth apprenticeship recruitment video. When I was thinking like, how do we get this message out to parents and prospective students and other employers? You know, I'm only a one-man show, so I can't really like, you know, talk to everybody. Let's make a video. And I thought of Dan right away, and phenomenal. I mean, I can show it to you if you haven't already seen it. It really captures the essence of the experience of the three YAs that are in it. They're from engineering, they're from healthcare, and they're also from the trades. And he also had one of our superintendents, who's kind of one of the brain children behind the idea of having kids do experiential learning, and just did a fantastic job. So please give him a round of applause as well. I could go on and on about every one of them, but I know we have, you know, a limited amount of time. I want to thank you guys very much. The impact that you have on our students is absolutely invaluable. When they look back on their high school careers, I would like to think that they would think about, you know, English teachers like me, you know, and the poetry that they learned. But in reality, they're gonna remember certain things, and definitely their experiences with you will be up on the top of that list. So with that, I believe Kitty has some pictures we're gonna take, and then, okay.
We're gonna use the Greendale High School Panther as a backdrop. And I'd like the gentleman wearing black shirts to be anchors in the back. And then I'd like Deb, you step forward. Dan, you scooch back behind Deb. Lady in the red, please step forward as well. Kathy, you scooch in. The gentleman with the black jackets, okay. All right. So we're gonna take three. One, two, three. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Thank you again for all you've done and for joining us tonight. All right, next on our agenda tonight is our Greendale Panther Pride, and we have a courtyard update.
Yes.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Yes, we do. I would like to ask Nick Lausch to come to the microphone. A little while ago, Nick stepped forward and said he wanted to work on an Eagle Scout project to benefit the Greendale schools. And we spent a little time brainstorming, and he chose the most ambitious option that we had available. And tonight, he's gonna share with you the progress of that. Since in daylight you can see it happening, we thought it would be helpful to, in advance, provide some information to the board. Go ahead, Nick. I have your slides.
Great. So my name is Nick, and planning for this project began quite a while back, actually, in April of 2022 now. So we've been planning this for the last few months, and then recently, we've gotten our foot in the door with some construction. It's a bit dark outside right now, but in the last few weeks, we've excavated all the dirt, as seen in the blueprint. We've also laid around twenty-two tons of stone in the courtyard. This week, we'll be laying the post for the purview structure and having Diggers Hotline come and mark the ground. Next week, we will be laying concrete, letting it settle for a week, and then we'll be building up the rest of the structure. So we're putting a lot of the hard construction done in the next few weeks. We've been very thankful to be working with Jason Sobrowski at J&amp;J, and they've been very helpful, as you can see by the blueprints made by J&amp;J, the structure being built by J&amp;J, the other subcontractors helping me be found by J&amp;J. He's been a great help through all of this. So in the district rating forms for capital projects, this actually was rated number two out of more than eighty-seven projects, I believe. And this is seen as the increase in school security, the addition of curricular and co-curricular spaces. So we hope this will be a great space for students and staff alike. There's gonna be many opportunities for student involvement in this project, including the National Art Honor Society helping to paint a mural on the fence, in involvement with the student introduction to skilled trades class, helping to build a shed eventually, as well as members of the National Honor Society helping with landscaping work, which will take place later in the spring. Thus far, we've received $6,000 in donations and thousands of others in donations of labor. And we hope to raise a total of $60,000 for this project in order to cover all the costs. Some of the other additions that we hope to have, security cameras just to meet the district policies, possibly lighting and sound capabilities, so we can turn this into a great evening space. We recently found a contractor who was able to donate the cost of the labor and installation of electricity outside in the courtyard. So we've been working very hard with these connections. And recently, we had submitted a grant proposal to the Ryanman Foundation, so we're hoping that we're able to partner with them on this project in order to make sure that we're able to get this done effectively and as the way it should, to make sure that it's really a paradise away from having to spend every day inside for seven hours. And we're very happy that we're able to finally get something out here after sixty years, maybe, of that being nothing but grass and trees. Thank you.
Nick, are you a senior or?
I'm a sophomore at Greendale High School.
You're a sophomore. That's even more impressive.
Yes. Thank you very much.
So much.
So I was gonna see if any of the, first of all, I'm gonna compliment you right off the bat. Having a son that's an Eagle Scout, I have not seen a project to this magnitude before. So your vision, and I know you've been talking to me about this for quite some time, just to see the work underway, has been just great on your part, just a great involvement. And I know your ambition is there. I also want to thank J&amp;J for lending a hand in this project, as well as the others that you mentioned. I think that's great. I wanted to see if any of the board members have any questions or any thoughts on this project.
When is the projected finish date?
So we'll be finishing all of the hard labor hopefully in the next few weeks with the concrete, just because we're getting dangerously close to the time period you can pour concrete. Then hopefully, a lot of the landscaping and student involvement will take place around March, April, May, trying to get it finished by the spring, so it'll be ready for use by next school year. As a lunch area, study all area, classroom area, as a number of science classes require, you do have an outdoor space and benefits many groups.
Yeah, outdoor classrooms are really popular now. So thank you so much for bringing that to the school district.
Of course.
And it's really impressive, because the construction world is so busy right now that you were able to pull all this together. So that's admirable as well. I'm sure there are a lot of people, you know, impressed by that. So thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just say thank you for your vision. I think a couple of things that kind of sparked my curiosity was your comment that this project ranked high for the high school. So I think it's great that you've matched up that need with your vision. So thank you for working there. And I don't think it should be lost on anyone who's either attending tonight or maybe listening, that you're still looking for some money. So anyone that is
That's true. Thank you.
Anyone that isn't in a position to help. Which troop are you with?
Troop 506 of Greendale, Wisconsin. We actually just recently hit our one-hundredth Eagle Scout.
Congratulations.
Wow, that's impressive, too.
So congratulations, and I think it also speaks very highly that you're able to attract people who want to support you. So I think that speaks very highly of your vision and your determination. And I think that also speaks highly of our community supporting the schools and wanting to do well for the schools. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you very much.
I did have a question. Where can people donate?
We're hoping in the coming weeks to set up kind of a GoFundMe page where community members can donate. But also, I have an email and a phone number, which I can distribute to required people if necessary, so they can come and see me after this.
Yeah, we, we'll do some, we'll help to set up some crowdsourcing that will run through a district account. So we haven't set up the crowdsourcing account yet, but we'll be doing that in the next week or two.
So that would be through the district class unity. So you'd be familiar with other fundraisers. Yep.
How do the students access the courtyard?
So there are four entryways to the courtyard, one of them being right here, two of them from the art classrooms, as well as one access point relatively near to the lunch room, near where they have the staff bathrooms. So that was included in the renovations of 2020 to include, to increase accessibility to the space. So there's four points of entrance.
Thank you.
And have you, is there a name for the courtyard? Is there any name or signage associated with this project?
At the end of the project, we hope to get a plaque made to recognize donors, as well as key people in this. But as for name, that's something that we're going to discuss later on, is we'd like to give it a fitting name, and we will see that process through as we get close to the completion.
Looks like everything's working out for you, 'cause the next ten days with beautiful weather.
The weather is great, yes. It's our friend for once in Wisconsin.
No, this is amazing. Very impressive. But if you need any help, I'm sure there are people willing to help you out.
Thank you very much.
I don't want to go ahead and volunteer the whole board, but if any of us are willing, I'm sure that you could get an extra set of hands.
That's part of his job, to recruit volunteers. He'll let you know.
So what, speaking of volunteers, how, do you have a certain number from your troop or other students from the district that are part of this project that will be helping to do it?
So we hope to have members of the Greendale Charter of National Honor Society be a part of this. Also, members of the troop, we have many active members in that, and also, as other students have expressed high interest in being a part of this project and making it a big community thing that can bring lots of different groups in the school together.
Nice. Thank you, Nick. All right. I want to thank you again. This is exciting to see in progress. And we look forward to seeing the final result, obviously, and probably will have you back here at some point to share the final renderings or the final project. So thank you again to all that have been a part of this. But Nick, for your vision, I think this is a really great legacy that you're gonna be leaving for many years after you've been a student here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, next on our agenda is the communications. And Dr. Mizik, do you have any communications tonight?
I do. Annually, the first week of October is Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week. With gratitude, I want to acknowledge our Greendale School Board members for their service, and thank you for all that you do. I'd also like to thank the Special Education Advisory Team for their work in planning a sensory-friendly event. On October 6th, we had nearly a hundred people join us at the middle school for some sensory-friendly activities and social activities for students that honored the needs of some of our students who are not always able to participate in our after-school activities. And I'd also like to thank Najiri Jackson for her work with the Student Equity Team in planning the event on October 6th around this National Hispanic Heritage Month. We had over three hundred people participate in that event, in which we had movie and some other events and activities, including some craft-making hosted by the Student Equity Team. On October 7th, Greendale Middle School hosted its annual Pride Kickoff Tailgate Party, named for the Greendale Middle School Character Education Program that focuses on perseverance, respect, integrity, diligence, and empathy. The event took place on the east front lawn of the middle school. Over two hundred and eighty people turned out for a grilled picnic dinner and the chance to visit with other families. Afterwards, some members of the crowd walked over to Greendale High School to watch the Greendale Panther Varsity Football Team defeat Whitnell, forty-nine to twenty-seven. Many people attending this pink-out game wore pink in support of breast cancer research. The Step Up for Better Health Fun Run Walk was held yesterday, many thanks to the organizing committee and all who participated. This annual event raises funds for our schools and promotes the healthy benefits of walking. There was a great turnout on a beautiful weather Sunday. College Park Principal Mr. Brock slept on the College Park roof on Friday, October 1st, because that was an incentive for students to register. The Step Up to Better Health Fun Run Walk Registration Competition, this new incentive, raised participation for his school. It was a success, and more than three hundred and ninety registrations were received, far exceeding the three hundred and fifty goal. And I would like to note that there were fewer than three hundred students enrolled at College Park. So he really brought out the College Park community. Save the Date, the high school fall play, Peter and the Starcatcher, runs from November 3rd through the 6th in the auditorium. Showtime is 7:00 PM each night, and tickets can be purchased at the door. All tickets are general admission, and we hope to see you there. A $500 donation was made to Greendale High School to support a students' Eagle Scout project. You can guess whose. We are grateful for the financial generosity and support for our students, and the Greendale Education Foundation approved a grant in the amount of forty-two hundred dollars? What? Forty-two fifty for tables in the courtyard, handicap-accessible tables for, to make that classroom more accessible. And that concludes my communications.
Thank you, Dr. Mizik. Next on our agenda tonight is our student updates, which we always enjoy hearing from our student representatives. So I guess you'll be sharing some current events and upcoming activities with us.
Yep. Happy to be doing so. So this weekend was a really big weekend for a lot of the sports here at Greendale. WIAA had a lot of their sectional events, which is basically just how you qualify for state. And Greendale had a couple of rough showings, but we also had a lot of positive things happening for our sports. On Friday, football unfortunately lost to New Berlin West, twenty-four to twenty. And on Saturday, boys soccer did lose to Brookfield Central, three to two. But on the brighter side of things, girls cross-country on Saturday finished section second at sectionals and qualified for state, which was the first time since 2019 that either of the boys or girls teams qualified for state as a whole. The boys finished third, but we had three runners qualify for state individually, with those being Nolan, Noah, and Sebastian. And on Saturday, Greendale Girls Volleyball played against Greenfield, and they play at the sectional semifinal on Thursday with a student-organized tailgate happening at 3:45 in the parking lot for the game, which takes place at 5:00 o'clock.
All right. And then focusing on our student council, we had our executive board voting outcomes, and that led to our president, Senior Ashley Turtow, co-vice presidents juniors Tyler Fletti and myself, and our secretary slash treasurer, our junior Ayana LaPointe, and sophomore Tess Saha. And we're currently focusing on a blood drive with versity happening on November 2nd that's open to students ages of sixteen and older and community members that come and attend to. And potential spirit day is coming up to just keep promoting Panther Pride in our school.
Awesome. What are the hours of the blood drive?
I believe the first appointment can be made at 7:00 AM or 7:15, and the last one can go up until 12:45.
Okay, and so the public can also sign up for this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great. Thank you both for your updates. We are gonna go on to our citizen comments next, and we do enjoy hearing from and appreciate hearing from the public. I've just got a statement I'll share. Welcome to all those who will be speaking this evening. We would like to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are official business meetings held in public. Through Board Policy 186, the board allows citizens to make comments by scheduling two opportunities on the agenda to receive citizen comments. In accordance with the intent of the open meetings law, please be aware that although the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public, it cannot discuss or debate items brought up during public comments. In order to hear from all citizens who wish to speak and to ensure the official business of the district is addressed, Board Policy sets a time limit for citizen comments. We will be adhering to that board policy and its time limits at tonight's meeting. Persons wishing to address the board are asked to come to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to only one time. Individuals who will be speaking will be limited to three minutes. Citizen comments are limited to a period not to exceed thirty minutes. So with that being said, is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Thank you. Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, everybody. Appreciate it. I want to start this off with actually thanking Nick for everything he's doing. First day, he reached out to me, very persistent. I loved it. And then he wanted to schedule a meeting in my office. He came in in his full uniform, his Eagle Scout uniform, or 2B, I would assume, right? Okay. And honestly, at that point, I was like, all right, I'm done. I'm a sucker. So if it wasn't for him, this thing wouldn't be happening, and I'm just so thankful to even be a part of it. It's gonna be amazing for all the kids that come through here for many years, you know, to come. And really want to thank also Kim and Jonathan and Steve. If it wasn't for you guys, this, you know, you guys have really helped a lot on this, too. So I really want to thank you guys for doing this. It's really awesome. So thank you to you two and you and Steve. So next, I want to talk about a referendum that was not, that didn't happen in 2018 regarding the gym facilities. I travel now a lot with my kids, going to different gyms, Muskego, Maguano. Literally, I just feel like everywhere. Every weekend, I'm in a different gym. Seeing all these different gyms just really shows how far Greendale is behind in our sports facilities. And I really think it's something that we need to reconsider and relook at, trying to do something with that. I just, I really feel that we're falling behind on that. I know everything else is amazing. I just, just being in so many different gyms, just seeing theirs compared to ours. The other thing, too, is it's really, I feel like, a moneymaker. Every, one of these gyms we go to, I have to pay, my wife has to pay, my two little ones have to pay. Like, you have to pay to get into these things. They have people with the tables standing or, you know, sitting there, and you have, everyone has to pay to go in, unless you're a player or a coach. And then the other thing was concession stands. I mean, they have six to eight people working these concession stands, and there's lines, like, just constantly buying food and stuff. So I think there's a good way to make some money there. So just really asking that you guys, at some point, I guess, take a look at that again for the future. you guys, at some point, I guess, take a look at that again for the future, sooner than later. I just think things will probably be getting worse, but I think now or the next year or two would be a good time to consider that. So, thank you so much. Thank you for all you guys do. I really appreciate you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. Go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening. Kevin Affelt, 4915 Steeple Drive. Just want to first of all say thank you to everyone in the room. The last couple of years with COVID has been challenging. As a parent of three young kids, you know, it's been, it's been very difficult, but trying to administer a school district and all the things that go into that, the regulations and the rules, I can't even imagine how difficult that was. Feel very fortunate that my kids are here in Greendale. Just a wonderful school district, wonderful people, and just very blessed to be here. Feel very blessed. I do want to just tie into actually something that the previous speaker said. So, as I mentioned, I have three young kids in the district. I help coach youth basketball, Parks and Rec basketball. I've also done soccer, TwiNight. And I just want to, you know, let you folks know that there is a real need for those athletic facilities to be upgraded. At this time, I know just from the experience I've had with basketball the last couple of weeks, just finding gym time for the kids, it's really difficult. And we have to go outside of the district. I also know that we have third graders. I coached one team. There's a second, third grade team. They have to practice until 8:30 at night, and they're, you know, they're third graders. It's suboptimal, to say the least. And so, I feel like so strongly about being in the district with my family. However, I do see other districts. I feel we're falling behind. And, you know, we need to stay competitive as a district as well. Obviously, the academics is a huge piece of it, but also the opportunities for the students to participate in athletics. I think, you know, the previous speaker mentioned, you know, gyms, you know, even something like a fieldhouse where our, you know, world-class marching band can practice indoors. I just think that this is really important for where we are right now as a district and where we want to be in several years. You know, if you just drive down 51st Street, you know, obviously Franklin's an entirely different district. I get that. That's not Greendale. But, you know, there's a lot of new construction going on over there. You know, their athletes have the best, their student athletes have the best facilities. And, you know, our kids should have those same opportunities too. At least, that's my opinion. So, thank you. I apologize. I'm a little bit under the weather, as you can probably tell. But thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And again, thank you for everything that everyone in this room does for the schools in Greendale. They're just wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. Mrs. Kowalczek, Highland Lane, Greendale. First, I'd like to commend Jason and, I didn't get his name. That would be great to have a fieldhouse for our marching band, since we do do a lot for the community and win. The reason that I'm coming to comment today is in lieu of recent events that happened a couple of weeks ago involving two Greendale High School students who got into a severe accident in Whitnell Park. I personally feel as a mother of a now-new 16-year-old driver, that driver's education needs to be brought back to the school districts. I took driver's ed. I understand that we do have the Just Drive, but I feel that the students that leave these parking lots in the day drive out of here way too fast. I made my child take the road test instead of signing the waiver. I fully believe that the state of Wisconsin needs to take that away. I understand it was put in place for COVID, but I think now is the time that this district needs to really rethink how our students are taught driver's education. 30 to 40 hours behind the wheel of the Just Drive car is not enough time. I think these kids need to be taught that driving in this state and in this country is not a right, it's a privilege. You have to earn it. I showed the pictures to my 16-year-old child, who I now watch through my Life 360 app. When I know that he's driving too fast, it alerts me, and then I text him and tell him to slow down, especially if he's driving a brand-new truck that I just purchased. So, I feel that the district needs to come together and rethink how that can be brought into the classroom setting. When I took driver's ed back in the dinosaur days of the 80s, we were shown videos, things like that. Luckily, thank God, these kids survived, but it was a beautiful day in Whitnell Park, and I don't think these kids realize the consequences that could have happened had somebody died. I don't think the teenage youth of today realizes that if not only they would have killed themselves or killed others, they could have been charged with vehicular homicide. That's a big thing, and I don't think parents teach that to their kids. I know I do. I can't speak for every parent in Greendale, but I do think that the district, if we're going to have driver's ed and we're going to allow kids to use the Just Drive, I think that that needs to be brought back to the classroom. Show these kids what happens when you have an accident. Show these kids that now the parents of these students, their insurance rates are going to skyrocket through the roof because they have two, they have teenage kids that are driving their cars. I can honestly sit here and tell you today that when my son passed his driver's ed, when he passed the road test and I had to call my insurance company, I thought my husband was going to have a heart attack when they said to me, "Your insurance rates are going up $411 every six months." Every six months. That's a lot of money. So, I just hope that you would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Kowalczek. Any other, anyone else that wants to speak tonight? And we will have a second time later in the meeting. Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda then to Agenda Item 1, which is the minutes. We had closed session meeting minutes from September 29th, as well as the regular meeting minutes from October 3rd.
I move approval of the closed session minutes of September 29th, 2022, and the regular board meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2022.
Second?
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the closed meeting minutes of September 29th and the regular meeting minutes of October 3rd. Any further discussion? If not, I'll look for a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 And I'm yes. Motion carries. Next on our agenda are our financial reports. We have our monthly financials, the revenue and expenditure reports, and we're looking to have approval of the checks and disbursements. So, were there any questions with that or anything, Mr. Mitchell, that you would like to share?
Just the summary through the month of September. We were at 8.97% of revenues. That's a little bit higher as our percentage of state aid versus property tax under the revenue limit has gone up. And then, on the expenditure side, we were at 14.28%, and that compares with 12.78% in the prior year. It's significantly higher because we completed the HVAC project at Highland View, and so have a larger amount of expenses at this time of year. We usually wouldn't have that large of an outflow of expenses, but we've been getting ongoing reimbursements from the Department of Public Instruction, because that's under stimulus funding. So, from a cash flow perspective, we've got money coming in for that, because we'll be heading into our low cash point here in the month of November.
Great. Thank you. Any discussion with any of that or questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve checks and disbursements.
I move to approve the general disbursements in the amount of $1,103,820.16, and payroll in the amount of $2,297,884.25 for a total disbursement of $3,401,704.41, as outlined in Agenda Item 2.
Second?
So, we have a motion and a second to approve checks and disbursements. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 And I'm yes. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. We are moving on to the new business and action items, 4.1, 2, 3, and 4 tonight. So, we have some information here, and then we are set for approval tonight. So, Dr. Mizik?
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell.
So, I'm going to go through a few slides, and then I'll provide recommended motions. So, the two motions are going to be on the budget and the tax levy for the 22-23 school year, but I'll come back to that when we get through a few slides here. So, just a reminder, this budget's a reflection of how we're allocating our resources, both our time and money, towards priority areas. When we look at the state funding level, our per pupil revenue caps have legged inflation by $3,100 since 2009. And when we go back from 2002 to 2020, the state of Wisconsin has been 48th in the country in the percentage of per-student spending increase. So, what that means is the state has gone from 11th to 25th in per-pupil spending overall, and that's prior to spending freeze in additional per-student spending in the 21-23 budget. So, we look at that from a state funding versus spendable increases, because we get the question, we're hearing there's additional money that's coming to the district. So, if we look at the last five years, there's been a 13.5% increase in funding, but of that, about 5.5% has been actually spendable. And so, that's where we're getting that data point for spendable expenditures. And so, the state is falling behind in that investment for students. As we look at state funding and rising costs, so we know the Consumer Price Index used for bargaining is at 4.7% for the current year, and it's estimated to be closer to 8% when we get to the 23-24 school year. So, we're thinking about competition for labor, bus contracts, our expenses, which would be fuel, gas, electric, rises in construction and maintenance costs, what that will look like into the future. So, as we go through the budgetary process, we use our four-step process. We always start by identifying those student needs, then take a look at the revenues, what's available for us to spend, and then we'll use our budgetary principles to prioritize that, and then finally bring a budget that is balanced to the school board, and thinking about our strategic priorities as we do that. Mentioned our budgetary principles, and as we go to needs identification, our assumptions for costs. So, as we look at inflationary cost increases, so we've talked about these at prior meetings, salary and benefits, each at 4% increases budgeted, our utility is at a 10% increase, the price for gas and natural gas has been higher, and electricity has been higher this year. Our transportation costs, we've talked about student needs and complexity of needs and investments there, as well as youth options programming for those students that are electing that at the high school level. As we mentioned earlier, there's no new spendable revenue per student in the current biennium budget. So, as we work towards aligning that budget, we have revenues and expenses for our general operating fund of $35,465,533. That's a 1% increase from our unaudited figures for last year. So, that's in balance, and our all-funds budget of $44,859,915. Our special education fund, $6,299,458, and about 2/3 of that is coming from local transfer from our general fund budget. So, state and federal sources reimburse for about 1/3 of those costs, those excess costs, and then the other 2/3 are coming locally. We are also strategically using the Essar one-time federal stimulus funds to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as academic recovery. So, in the past, we've talked about this, the three levels of Essar allocation and related timelines to spend those funds, and where we at, where we are at to date in spending those dollars. For 22-23, we're at $1,657,000 of budgeted revenues, and we're making investments in instructional support specialists, personal protective equipment, nursing and healthroom staff. We talked about the UNIVET project earlier and other HVAC upgrades in the district in alignment with the intention for those federal dollars. A couple items on budgetary savings, self-funded health insurance. So, we are just starting our second year of being self-funded for health insurance. We utilize local, state, federal contracts. We share an IT director with the Village of Greendale, and as class size allows and we have capacity, we add additional open enrollment seats to receive revenue. So, some of the areas in which we find savings to prioritize the budget. And so, here's the list of items that we've gone through this year to work through a projected deficit of $980,000 and get the budget in balance, as it is today. Then, as we consider state funding and student membership, so here we have our three-year student membership of 2,474. You'll see that it's a slight dip from where we are, but when we look over a 10-year time period, we have gone up significantly in student membership. So, we're up about 10%. And so, that reflects student increases and changeover within the community, as we're seeing some new families come in, and the rate at which they're having children, because there's the desire to be in this Greendale community. And we're going to talk about our community analysis study here in a second, and there's some key points from that that point to that, as we've had conversations with those new families.
Can you go back to the enrollment? I just want to remind the board that membership is resident enrollment. So, as resident enrollment has increased, open enrollment space available has decreased. So, our actual number of students in our schools has been fairly flat because of the rising resident enrollment. So, these are students who reside in the village. So, I just want to remember that. Remember, membership is resident students.
And that dip on that slide, I'm sorry, can you go?
Sure, yeah.
Is that about 100 students? Can I, I'm not sure if I'm seeing the numbers correctly.
Yeah, 25 to 24, 100.
It's 150?
That is 50 students on a three-year rolling basis.
Okay.
Yep.
And so, in that, so over the past three years, we lost 50 students. Is that what that represents, that dip?
That versus a year ago, that three-year period on average. Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So, then, this blue line represents level of state aid and that orange line representing total tax levy. So, as the number of students has increased, and there's been additional funding from the state, that state from equalization aid, that blue line has increased, and you can see that overall in that 10-year period that we are mostly flat. And this would be the third year in a row that the district would be proposing a slight decline in the school tax levy. So, what we have presented is a school tax levy of $15,336,850 total. That is the same total tax levy as what was presented at the annual meeting. The general fund is $9,000 higher. The overall tax levy sits at $8,864,703. The referendum debt service fund is $4,526,244. So, that slight adjustment down to reflect that higher general fund amount. The non-referendum debt service fund is $962,486. Our capital expansion fund, proposed tax levy $200,000, and community service fund of $783,417. And that comes to the total proposed tax levy of $15,336,850. And so, when we break that down further, we take a look at those tax levy components and then add items that are outside of the district control. So, we have our private school vouchers. So, we've received that amount of $395,751. And we did receive, so this would be updated from the earlier slides, we received an updated TIF estimate of $678,305. So, that's more So that's more than a fifty percent decrease from what it was last year. And so we got some notes from the village manager, um, regarding that. And so I can just reference that quick to provide some additional color. So there was the closure of one of the TIFs, uh, TIF three. And so that is, the replacement for that is the proposed TIF six. So that came out and then there was a revaluation of TIF two to a hundred and seventy million and then down to a hundred and fifty-one million. And so there's a significant change, um, this year, uh, because last year that was about one point five five million. And now our projected TIF amount is six hundred and seventy-eight. Now that's outside of what the board actually approves, um, but just want to provide that information for context. And so that total school tax levy of fifteen million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand would reflect a mill rate of nine dollars and one cent. Um, given the reassessment and the increases overall within the property valuation, it's a little bit harder to take a look at that figure and make the analysis of what your tax levy will be. And so the better metric that I would utilize for communicating with the community is that overall that school tax levy is going down one point five percent. That, that makes sense. So overall, it's showing a mill rate decrease of eleven point eight percent. That's not really reflective. You're not going to see as a typical taxpayer, eleven point eight percent decrease on your school taxes because of that, because overall property valuations are going up. So the recommended motions, one for the tax levy would be an all funds tax levy of fifteen million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And an all funds expenditure budget of forty-four million, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, or eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. So just to reference then the additional items that are in the board packet. So there's a couple ways the budget's broken down. There's an all funds budget breakdown in item four point two. So that's typically been presented at the annual meeting and at the budget approval meeting. Four point three is the DPI published level of approval. So that is required for passing the budget and tax levy. So that would be a reference document for the two motions that we have recommended here. And then four point four is additional information as we've done in the past on what makes up the proposed fund eighty tax levy. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions before the board considers the recommended motions.
Okay, so with that, um, any questions tonight?
I would like to remind the board that this is what was presented at the annual meeting. And there was an advisory vote taken of the residents who were present, which was a small number of residents. Um, but that is what they did approve at the annual meeting.
Oh, just to add one note to that. So the, we did meet with the citizen finance team last week, Wednesday, to discuss these slides and this information as well. And the citizen finance committee had no issues with this information as presented.
Can you just, um, refresh, um, what is the makeup of the citizen finance committee?
So we have a variety of community members, many of which are either actively working in finance, um, as their full-time careers and, um, more than one that have, uh, done finance through public service on the school board as former treasurer or other local government municipalities have been a part of that. So they bring additional expertise, both in general of how business and finance operates, but also governmental finance. And so that group, uh, provides advisory information when we ask key questions on the budget, on tax levies. They also give us really helpful information on communicating the budget. So what formats and feedback specifically on tools or presentations and ways we would present. Um, and we also have our current treasurer, Tasha, is also a member of that citizen finance team as well, just to gain that additional insight, um, when we meet together. So that's typically a group of five to eight at any time that are coming to a particular meeting.
Great, thank you for that. So questions or comments or thoughts?
I guess I'll just thank you, Jonathan, and to the business, um, department for, for its transparency and clarity regarding the budget. Like you said, we've been pretty consistent with, you know, what we did in June to approve the budget at that time, what we did in, uh, September to present it to the community and have a, an advisory vote and now what we're presenting tonight. So, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, um, are you, you ready for a motion?
I'm, I'm just making sure there is no, no further discussion at all or questions? Tasha, I know you're, I don't want to put you on the spot as a treasurer, but is there anything you have to add? I know you're on the committee.
No, I had most of my questions answered at the committee.
Okay. Thank you. And again, for, uh, for the layout of this, um, for us, um, Mr. Mitchell, it's been very helpful. So I am going to be looking for two motions. We'll start with the first one, um, which is to approve the tax levy of fifteen million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars as presented tonight.
Um, I'll move approval of the tax levy in the amount of fifteen million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars as presented tonight.
A second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the tax levy of fifteen million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. I will take a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, so motion carries. And then our second item is to approve the all funds, did you say, um, you said something else about that, um, all funds?
Expense budget.
Expense, okay, so it's the all funds expense budget of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars as presented.
I make a motion to approve the all funds expense budget of forty-four million, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the all funds budget of forty-four million, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars as presented. I will take a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, so motion does carry. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for all your hard work with that and for your phone call this afternoon. So we are on to item number five, which is our new business. First, uh, tonight is five point one, which is the information on the community change and projection report and the community change in student enrollment projections for two thousand twenty-two. And we received that in our board packet. Uh, Dr. Mitzik, do you want to take the lead on this?
I'm going to again turn it over to Mr. Mitchell and our consultant who completed the study.
Yeah, so we have Nick Johnson, who's joined us from M.D. Roffers. The district engaged, uh, the entity, the M.D. Roffers several months ago and talked about the need to take a look at current trending of student population. So when we were having the budget discussion, we talked about that steep increase in resident population and our three-year averages. So taking a look at that engaging trends for the future. Uh, we also had a question that was beginning to emerge regarding a proposal for redevelopment at the Boston store site and, uh, potentially a large number of apartments being added. And so there were questions that were coming with that as to what does the capacity look like at schools? What potentially may those developments bring in terms of new students? And how will that fit in with long-range capital planning the district's doing? How will that fit in with building and staffing capacity plans? So for those multitude of reasons, um, we engaged that team. And thankfully, they've gotten that, um, done for the conversation this evening and the following agenda item that we are going to have. So we feel like we've got really good data to be able to share and add to that discussion. Um, but I will let Nick, um, drive through key points of this report. And this is really an opportunity for the board to learn and ask any questions about that and process. So thank you, Nick.
So Jonathan, I, I thought I had a presentation, a PDF presentation as well.
There is one.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get that up.
Perfect. Well, well, great, I appreciate you all having me here tonight. Uh, my name's Nick Johnson. I'm a planner and project manager with M.D. Roffers Consulting. A little bit about M.D. Roffers Consulting, we're an urban planning firm. Uh, we're based in Madison, but we do work, uh, in many communities across the state. About half of the work that we do is working with, uh, villages, cities, on comprehensive plans, redevelopment plans, things like that. Uh, but about the other half of the work we do is a specialized niche that we've developed and working with school districts and helping, uh, school districts, uh, perform enrollment projections and prepare for, uh, future facility changes and facility planning. Um, so we worked with the Greendale School District, uh, throughout most of the summer. I think we started in June and then finished our report at the end of August. So here to share those findings with you all. Yeah, this looks like it. Uh, so that next slide, Jonathan, number two, uh, just going over the overview of the presentation. So I'll first, uh, briefly touch base on some, uh, housing demographic and enrollment trends specific to the Greendale School District, but also for Milwaukee County and the state of Wisconsin as a whole and how that might impact the Greendale School District. I'll go through our methodology summary, uh, walking you through how we perform our projections. Then I'll go through our actual projections, or our housing projections are the first half of that. And then our student enrollment, uh, projections and comparing that to the capacity of your school buildings. So that next slide, steady enrollment over the past decade. Uh, so we kind of touched base about this in this previous, um, agenda item. Uh, but we had really steady enrollment over the last decade. And this is total students and seats. So this is your resident enrollment, so your membership and then your open enroll in students. Uh, so we saw really steady enrollment, uh, through all, all grade groupings. Uh, the district has consistently, uh, experienced an open enrollment gain, uh, over the last decade. So there's always been more students open enrolling into the district than resident students open enrolling out of the district. You see the, uh, number of resident, of open enroll in students thrown in that green line. Uh, that's been, uh, decreasing over the last decade, but still remaining above the number of, uh, resident students, students open enrolling out, uh, in that red line. The net open enrollment, uh, from, into the district comes primarily from Milwaukee Public Schools. Uh, but the district also has net open enrollment gain from the nearby Greenfield School District. Uh, and then experiences, uh, net open enrollment loss, uh, mostly to districts to the west like Witnol and then others in Waukesha County. Uh, over the last decade as well, births in the district have remained relatively stable with about a hundred twenty, two hundred thirty births, uh, per year. Uh, this is unusual. Uh, most districts, uh, and municipalities in the state have seen decreasing numbers of births over the last decade. Uh, the state of Wisconsin has, has experienced about a fifteen percent, uh, decrease in births in the, over the past decade. So the, the district is really an outlier here. Uh, the population of reproductive age, so, uh, those folks that are aged twenty-five to forty-four, uh, that actually increased in the district by about twenty percent, uh, over the last decade. So this is information from the U.S. Census. So from about thirty-one hundred people in twenty-ten to about thirty-eight hundred people in twenty-twenty. Uh, also going against, uh, state and national trends that are, uh, seeing this population decrease. Uh, this is map two, I believe, from our report, uh, that shows the percentage of women of reproductive ages as a percentage of the total population. So those bolder colored areas have greater numbers of women aged twenty-five to forty-four. Uh, these are areas where we likely see increasing numbers of births over the next decade and therefore, uh, increasing numbers of students.
Is that the R and S section?
Uh, not, not surprisingly with the increase of folks aged twenty-five to forty-four, uh, the median age has decreased in the district as well from about forty-five years old in twenty-ten to forty-two years old in twenty-twenty. Uh, and one, and once again, going, uh, against county statewide and national trends. Uh, it can really be due to the attractiveness of your district, uh, to younger families, uh, those that either have children or those that are planning to have children, uh, and correlates with that increase in reproductive age population. Uh, another part of our analysis was looking at where, uh, single-family homes have been sold. Uh, so this is map four from our report showing single-family home sales by neighborhood. Uh, those bolder colors are where there's just been greater numbers of single-family home sales. Uh, in areas where we could see, you know, new families are likely moving and where we could see enrollment, uh, either remain stable or increase from those neighborhoods. So specifically, uh, the M's neighborhood and then the O's neighborhood. Uh, we also know a lot about the housing market because that, that directly impacts enrollment at, uh, district schools. Uh, and, and there is a housing shortage, uh, in Greendale specifically, but also in the larger Milwaukee area and the state of Wisconsin. We just haven't built enough homes, uh, really since the end of the great recession in the, in the late two thousands to keep up with demand. Uh, and since my generation, the millennials are pretty much all in their thirties now, buying homes, settling down, having kids, uh, that demand is even higher than it's ever been. Uh, there were about a thousand, eleven hundred single-family lots created in the seven county greater Milwaukee region, uh, in twenty-twenty, while only twenty-three hundred new homes were permitted. So just fewer lots available to build a new single-family home on. The supply of for sale homes in Greendale has been low. Uh, we spoke with a few local realtors as part of our analysis and they say that homes go very quickly, uh, when they're put on the market here in Greendale. Uh, approved and pending new housing units do suggest an increase in housing construction, uh, in your community and in your district over the next several years, uh, with them almost being entirely in the form of multiple families. So apartments, condominiums, townhomes, things like that. Uh, recent building permit activity has really been mostly due to new multiple family developments. Uh, they're just shy of two hundred housing units permitted, uh, in the district over the past decade. Uh, the vast majority of those were in the form of multiple family housing, specifically Berkshire, Greendale, uh, senior housing, where we don't have any kids coming from there. Uh, but then the green belt apartments that were built, uh, also within the last few years, uh, both of which were built on former South Ridge Mall property. So that redevelopment of the area is already starting to happen. Uh, this slide and the next one are just a, a few kind of main factors that affect enrollment. Uh, so population growth, uh, and thereby student enrollment growth are really driven by local and regional job growth. So a lot of people move to places where they're either close to their work or they can commute to their work. Uh, the region's extensive transportation network provides easy access, uh, to major job centers. So downtown Milwaukee, uh, areas in Waukesha County, Menominee Falls, uh, even Racine and elsewhere in southeastern Wisconsin. Significant planned redevelopment, uh, is, is planned around, uh, in and around the South Ridge Mall area, which is also part of a, a much larger trend that's occurring across the region. So we're seeing redevelopment happening at Mayfair Mall, uh, Spring Mall, Regency Mall in Racine. There was just a, a proposal a couple of weeks ago for, I think, four or five hundred apartments to be built on part of the, the former Regency Mall in Racine. So, uh, really part of a larger trend that we're seeing across the Milwaukee area.
Where is Spring Mall?
Spring Mall is, uh, in Greenfield.
Oh, the Cold Spring?
Yeah.
That's considered a mall over there?
It is, yes.
Okay, and it's coming back to life, it sounds like, yeah?
Greenfield.
Right. And then this is my, uh, shameless bragging about my beautiful daughter Eleanor here.
She is a.
Uh, this is a, a few months old. She just, she's, uh, fourteen months now and just, uh, late bloomer popped her first tooth and has five more coming in. So, uh, so it's been a fun couple of weeks of sleep for us. Yeah, but, uh, so, so we suggest, uh, stable or, or, or even increasing numbers of births in the district, uh, really due to the large millennial cohort that's been, uh, really migrating here over the last decade. Neighborhoods close to schools, uh, as well as neighborhoods with more affordable housing, uh, particularly older and, and more affordable apartments, uh, that are present in your community. Uh, they generate many students. We expect them to continue generating many students. Uh, we do expect new multiple families. So the things that you're seeing, uh, at the South Ridge Mall area, so the green belt apartments and then future apartments will likely generate fewer students, um, than some of the older, more affordable apartments. A lot of the newer apartments that are being built are, are market rate, they're mostly one and two-bedroom units, uh, not as attractive to folks with kids. Uh, however, the, the village does remain an area leader, uh, in providing family-friendly amenities. And you're a, a small, kind of small-town, tight-knit community in, in part of the large city, which. and you're a small, kind of small-town, tight-knit community in part of the large city, which is really hard to find, I think, in a lot of places. And the district is also a high-performing school district, especially for being in Milwaukee County. So, definitely attracting a lot of folks to the district. Touching base on our methodology, so our first step was to kind of divide the district up into smaller little chunks that act as puzzle pieces. So we divided the district into 37, what we call neighborhoods. So they're based on elementary attendance areas, but also commonly understood neighborhoods, like the As, the Ms, the Os, as well as major roads and other barriers. Our second step was we allocated the number of housing units by neighborhood for 2022. We were able to get US, we were able to get data from the US Census for 2020 to determine the number of housing units within each of our neighborhoods, and then using information from the village, we were able to update that to 2022. We then analyzed community and developer plans for each neighborhood in step three. We met with the village manager, we met with other folks in the village, also spoke with a couple developers that have developed in Greendale or are planning to develop in Greendale, to determine their plans and their timing for when they plan to develop. Then we projected our housing unit growth for our projection period, so 2024, 27, 2030, and 2035, using that information we collected from the village of Greendale, as well as the developers. This step five is a little beefier, but it is very important in our work. So, we analyzed factors to calculate student-per-housing-unit ratios. So it's important for us to know how housing within each of our neighborhoods are generating students. So, if there's 100 housing units in a neighborhood and 50 students, that neighborhood have a ratio of .5, .5 students generated from each housing unit. We did do a survey of recently sold single-family homes, so homes that have been sold over the last three or four years. And data that from that survey suggested that each recently sold single-family home generated about .66 grade-four, K-12 students for the district, which is one of the highest figures we've actually seen in our work for a very urbanized district like the Greenfield School District. Survey results also suggested a ratio of .39, age zero to four children. So these are kids that, they're infants, toddlers, they're not yet in your school district, but they will be over the next few years. Survey results also showed about 77% of these folks that lived in these new, recently sold, single-family homes moved here from outside of the district. So, really attracting a lot of folks from across southeastern Wisconsin. And then half of those sold homes were sold to at least one parent aged 19 to 39. So again, showing that Greendale is attracting a much younger, younger community and younger folks buying homes. Then in a separate analysis, we looked at how multiple-family housing, specifically older, multiple-family housing that was developed in the 60s and 70s in your community, how they're generating students, and it's about a .28 ratio. So for 100 apartment units, there will be about 28 kids coming from those apartments.
Does that take into account the side-by-sides? We have a lot of side-by-side homes in Greendale.
That does not, actually. It takes into account just the apartments. Yep, not your like quadplexes or townhomes.
Okay.
Our step six, we projected district student-per-housing-unit ratios by neighborhood for each projection period in each grade group. Step seven, we just projected our multiplied, or we multiplied our projected housing units for each projection period by those student-per-housing-unit ratios, and that gives us our district resident-student enrollment projections. And then since we know there's quite a few folks that open enroll in to your district, we added those to our resident enrollment projections. That gave us our total students in seats for each school for each projection period. And now getting into our projections. So first, going to touch base on our housing-unit projections. So, we project increasing multiple-family housing development, really for several reasons. So the village's desire and support for South Ridge Mall redevelopment, getting more folks in the community, increasing population, getting more residents that can visit local shops, things like that. So the village wants and is desiring support for the redevelopment of South Ridge Mall. The central location of Greendale in the Milwaukee region, recently-built apartments, like the green-belt apartments, have been very successful. They have, I think, either a 0% or 1% vacancy rate, so they're almost entirely occupied. And then just in general, as we're kind of monitoring how the housing market's changing, specifically over the last few months with rising interest rates, with that housing shortage that we know already exists in our community and in the region, and with higher interest rates, there's just going to be fewer and fewer people that can afford a mortgage. They can't afford a mortgage at a 7% interest rate, but they could at a 3% or 4%. But with interest rates at that 7%, they're going to be stuck renting still in multiple-family units. So, we expect a greater demand for multiple-family housing.
Do you have a sense for, so I think you had up there before, a ratio of like .22 students per multifamily?
.28.
Sorry?
.28.
Which was 28 students?
Yeah, so that's for...
That's for all, right? All multifamily?
That is, correct. So that's for all...
Yeah. I was gonna say, so my question is, green-belt is relatively new.
It is.
Unit. Do they come in higher or lower? You mentioned, you know...
.1.
Okay, so they're lower because this type of multifamily housing unit is not looking to, with one or two bedrooms, they aren't marketing toward the young families with...
Or the rents too expensive?
Right.
Yeah, they're typically market rate, so, and since they're newer, they tend to be more expensive than your more, your older apartments that were built in the 60s and 70s.
You go from .28 down to a .1?
That's what green-belt, yep. Green-belt is a .1 ratio.
Thank you.
But then, across the board, it was a .28. There were some multiple-family apartments in your community that I think were at like a .6 or a .7.
I think Highland Lane is the highest at .86.
That sounds...
Okay.
Highland Lane.
Highland Lane.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but we'll let him finish the conversation, and I'm sure we can direct questions to you after. Is that okay?
That sounds great, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So with all of that being said, we do project just shy of 1,600 new housing units in the district by 2035, or about 120 per year, with the, you know, almost all of them multiple-family. I think there's just a couple of single-family lots remaining in your community. So the vast majority of that is multiple-family. In map eight in our report, I believe this is, or map six, shows our housing-unit projections for each of our neighborhoods. 33 of your 37 neighborhoods, we don't project there's going to be really any new housing in those neighborhoods. They're going to look very similar in 2035 as they do today. We are projecting some small-scale, multiple-family in your village center, so that's in, I think, neighborhoods 26 and 29. But then the vast majority of new housing will be in the South Ridge Mall area that we project. This includes the pending redevelopment of the Boston Store site. So, half of all of our projected housing units are planned in that Barrettlow apartment redevelopment, the former Boston Store. That's 780 units total, spread across three separate phases. We do expect a similar unit mix as other Barrettlow projects. We did speak with Barrettlow, and they gave us that impression. So about 65% of the units will be studio and one-bedroom, 20% two-bedroom, and 15% three-bedroom units. So likely, there will be kids coming from here, but there won't be as much as if it was, maybe 50% three-bedroom units. So some of those two-bedroom, and especially the three-bedroom, will be attractive to families with children. This is a table showing our housing-unit projections by current elementary school attendance area. So, we see there's some housing projected in the Canterbury Elementary Attendance Area. That's just some of the small-scale, multiple-family that we anticipate in the village center. Very minimal in College Park and Highland View, and then the vast majority in the South Ridge Mall area, which, at the time of writing and at the time of now, has not been assigned to any elementary school attendance area, as it's not producing kids for you guys. We also understand that outside of new housing units, what happens in existing housing has a major impact on future enrollment. So, we analyzed 10 to 12 different characteristics of existing housing within each of our neighborhoods, as well as existing residents and demographics in each of our neighborhoods, that contributed to our projected resident enrollment changes. So a few of them listed here, so percentage of housing that's owner-occupied, women aged 25 to 44 as a percentage of the total population. Some of these we've already touched base on. Median age, housing type, as well as how the number of students changed in that neighborhood over the last 11 years or so. And given those 10 to 12 characteristics that were incorporated into our projections model, we were able to predict a unique student-per-housing-unit trajectory for each neighborhood, projecting that students-per-housing-unit in that neighborhood would either increase, remain steady, or decrease through 2035. Now getting to the good stuff, our enrollment projections. First, school capacity, though. So, district staff provided a capacity range for each school that you see in our report. Capacity was calculated based on target class sizes, as well as the number of classrooms in that, that school building. So for example, there's eight sections per grade at Greendale Middle School, and with a target class size of 26 to 30 students for grade six to eight, the capacity of that school is 624 to 720 as a minimum target and a maximum target for capacity. And then our enrollment projections. So we project an increase of just over 110 resident 4K to 12 students, up to about 2,460 resident 4K to 12 students by 2035, increase of about eight new resident students per year on average. It does assume that private schooling, as well as open enrollment out, and homeschooling remain at a constant rate as today. And this is just resident enrollment. We'll touch base on open enroll in students in a little Our total enrollment projections, this is the map showing that the red area, the South Ridge Mall area, is where we expect a lot of additional students over the next 14, 15 years or so. Some other red neighborhoods are having a modest increase in enrollment. Several others are remaining fairly stable, fairly similar to the number of students they have today. And then some others are decreasing in enrollment. Looking at the 4K to 5 grade level, we project an additional 130 resident 4K to 5 students by 2035. So that does mean that all of the district's resident enrollment growth through 2035 will be focused in that elementary grade group, due to several things we've already kind of touched base on, but increasing numbers of births from the millennial generation, specifically over the next five to 10 years, increases in multiple-family units, which typically have more elementary-age children, as well as current large middle school and high school class sizes. And the district has yet to assign those projected elementary students from the South Ridge Mall area to any elementary school. This graph to the right shows that, in gray, the minimum target capacity of the combined district elementary buildings, and then orange right above it is the maximum target capacity. The black line is our projected resident enrollment, and then the red hash line includes the open enroll in students. So there's about 90 non-resident, grade-four, K-12 students that open enroll into the district. So factoring in those students, that minimum target capacity range is just barely exceeded in 2035, but there's still about 200 excess capacity to hit the maximum target in 2035. By elementary school, we anticipate and project that Canterbury Elementary and Highland View Elementary will remain fairly stable in their enrollment as today. We anticipate College Park Elementary increasing by about 10%, by about 25 resident students. And that, the area, if you remember, has lower median age, higher women of reproductive ages, several of those other characteristics, that we anticipate that area's just going to have more births over the next few years. Looking at the middle school grades, so grade six to eight, we project resident enrollment at Greendale Middle will basically remain stable over the next 15 years or so, decreasing by 13 students between 2021 and 2035. Doesn't consider open enroll in of non-resident grade students, which was 43 in the 2021 academic year. But you can see in that graph that there's still, including those open enroll in students, we're still under that minimum target capacity. Then looking at high school, we project resident enrollment at Greendale High will also basically remain stable by 2035. There's quite a few more open enroll in students at the high school level. There's about 140. And also, including those students, the district, or the high school is operating within its capacity range today, and is anticipated to continue doing so through 2035. This goes over a lot of the same information we've already touched base on, but shows each elementary school, as well as the South Ridge Mall area, and then the middle school and high school, our projections through 2035. All right, wrapping things up here. So, relation to school facility needs. So overall, the district appears to have adequate capacity to accommodate projected district students, resident, as well as open enroll in students through 2035, even with the large redevelopment plan to occur at South Ridge Mall. However, assigning those projected 75, grade-five, K-12 students from that South Ridge Mall area to Highland View, where the recently-built green-belt apartments are assigned, would appear to create capacity issues at Highland View. So those kids, I think it's on the next slide, actually, Jonathan. Yeah, so other assignment options for the South Ridge Mall kids could include assigning them to Canterbury or College Park. Canterbury is closest, but College Park does have greater excess capacity. Another potential solution could involve shifting some neighborhoods to College Park or Canterbury from Highland View to provide additional space at Highland View for South Ridge Mall students.
Can I just have a quick question?
Yeah.
Are there any impacts to transportation?
That's what I was gonna ask.
So, if we assign them to either Canterbury or to College Park...
Regardless of which elementary school those students would be assigned to, there would be a transportation requirement because of the...
Mm-hmm.
Because of Grange Avenue?
Because of the high traffic, the hazardous roads.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I would have expected, but thank you for confirming that.
Is it, is it possible that they would ever split students in that area, the South Ridge Mall area, between two schools, or, like, how does that work?
We, as we, as that construction begins and we look at our capacity, we would make recommendations on that. We do not have recommendations today.
Great. I think, Jonathan, that might be my last...
One more second.
Yeah, great. I would be more than happy to take any questions or comments that any of you have at this point.
Sure. That was, first of all, thank you, Nick, you said, right?
Nick, yeah.
Nick, thank you. That was very thorough, and I would like to defer to the board to see if anyone has any questions or concerns or thoughts.
I'd just like to say, it's all good news for Greendale. So, if you're lucky enough to be here already, you know, keep smiling. Still a destination location. People are, that want to sell their homes, have no trouble selling their home. And we have a great location. We're a suburb with a small-town feel, just to kind of summarize, you know, some of the things that I pulled out of your report. So, and there's nothing, thanks to the village for their work on the South Ridge development, because it doesn't sound like it's going to do anything but bring positive commerce and more options for the people who are living here. So, you don't need to worry about bringing back Ambrooster or any of those things. So, thank you. I'm really happy I'm back in my hometown, and I'm sure anyone listening in is happy to be here, too.
Any other questions or thoughts on this? I found your projections to be very interesting, you know, just following the ages and so forth. I know that there's a population that's starting to age out in the community, so I'm assuming that's where you're getting some of your numbers, as people are moving out and retiring or moving on, you know. And it was interesting to see how you had it color-coded by different subdivisions and so forth. I mean, to kind of get a feel for where the neighborhoods are growing, as opposed to kind of staying the same.
Yeah. And what's great with our neighborhood kind of methodology and analysis is it really helps to be used as puzzle pieces to shift attendance areas around if you need in the future. So, you know where a certain projected number of students will be, and if you need to add some to one school or remove them from a school, it's helpful to have.
And then, Jonathan, can you remind us, what's the total number of open enrollment, or Dr. Midsick maybe knows, too, total number of open enrollment students we currently have?
We are currently at about 260.
So there we go. So we, if needed, as far as transportation costs or seats in our classrooms, we would lower our open enrollment to provide for our in-resident students, I would assume.
We would follow our policy around open enrollment, and the concept behind open enrollment is when there is open capacity. And so your opening of open enrollment seats is based on enrollment projections, which we do annually. So this information helps us to do those enrollment projections. So this information helps us to do those enrollment projections on a year-over-year basis and accurately project what capacity we have to add open enrollment students to the minimum class size targets. So we wouldn't necessarily be reducing open enrollment, but we would be lowering the number of open seats based on accurate enrollment projections of resident students. And so even on some of those lines where if we had the same number of enrollment students, we might have a, like, be pushing up against the edge of our capacity, but our policy fills to the bottom number where capacity exists. And so there would be a gradual decline as we've seen over the last decade, going from a peak in the low 400s down to where we are today, which is 260 because you saw that membership per pupil of resident students climbing. So, so as we've done over the last decade into the coming decade, as we actualize enrollment projections, we would see a continued decline in open enrollment capacity.
And I think it's important to acknowledge that there is a financial impact to lowering open enrollment or to, you know, to have fewer open enrollment students. So, you know, earlier on in today's meeting, we talked a little bit about where we've been the last couple of years where there's been no additional spending increases. So one of the ways that we've been able to get additional revenue is by having, you know, 290 to, you know, right around that, additional enrollments. If, if Greendale students, if there's an impact on the number of Greendale students and we lower the number of open enrollments, and again, I say lower it based on what the policy is and everything, there will be a financial impact that we'll have to make sure. I know we'll get additional state money per pupil, but it's not a one-for-one dollar amount.
So you're implying that we get more money by open, I don't think that, it doesn't, yeah?
The state, the state amount per pupil is the same for open enrollment versus resident enrollment. What would increase if our local, our local resident student increases is the amount that the revenue limit for the local tax levy would go up.
Yes.
Correct. So you would see for every student, resident student we add, you would see, and you would see that offsetting state aid per pupil plus the local taxpayer would see, I mean, you're talking pennies per student when it's distributed amongst the population, but you would see increase, potential increases in the tax levy because of the increased student membership.
And this board has heard comments over at least the last almost 10 years of around people desiring to have more residents and less open enrollment. So in terms of listening, you know, of course, we would want to be servicing our resident students over and above any open enrollment students, so.
Yes, but our open enrollment students, in addition to generating revenue for seats that would otherwise go empty, have also allowed us to stabilize programming for our resident students and make sure we can continue to offer robust course offerings at the high school level and programming at the elementary and middle. So there's two benefits to.
Sure, yeah. But if there is an issue as far as enrollment, you know, we're obviously going to cater to our resident students, so.
We'll follow our policy, yes.
Correct. I guess I'm saying, you know, for those of us who have had children in the high school, you know, there is a robust offering of AP classes or you heard about the skilled trades classes or things like that, that typically you don't see that with a lower number of students, but we are allowed to offer that with the open enrollment. And you're absolutely right that we just have to be aware that there, there will be a financial impact.
Well, we have no idea what will happen from a financial standpoint as far as the state, too, so there's.
Correct.
We know what we know now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't know in 2035 when these projected increases are coming.
Is it safe to say, Dr. Mitzik, that some of, some of our open enrollment families probably do want to move to Greendale, but there aren't always places for them to purchase? Is that, would you say that was a safe assumption that there is some of that as well?
We have seen a number of our students who begin with us as open enrollment become resident students before graduating.
Which is another three cheers for Greendale. So people want to, want to be here and when they even try us out, they, they like to stay, so.
I have a question about the, would the kids that would be there in the switch, would they be grandfathered in so that they could stay?
We don't have recommendations at this time, but I'm going to go out on a limb and recommend that you not redistrict current residents.
Really great question.
Well, I would hope that whoever was, like, I think you mentioned, if you split them up at the Southridge area, I mean, it's really nice to be in your neighborhood with the same kids you go to school with.
Right.
So I'd like to see half of the kids in the apartments.
I think we will be able to identify an attendance area that allows us to work within the capacity of each of the three elementary schools and keep the students in the, in the schools that they're in and together with the students that they live with.
Yeah, and that is kind of what I was getting at, too. I think our community has always kind of prided itself on, on individuals in their neighborhoods, you know, having that school pride, if you will, so. So I think that would be good, too.
All right, anything else?
I just say thank you. I think this is very important. I think this is very nice.
Yeah, very helpful.
You know, this gives us some idea as to what's going to happen, you know, rather than just saying, well, we don't know what's going to happen in 10 years. This shows us some data that, that reflects, you know, what the trends are and what currently is happening. I guess, the question for administration is, what are the takeaways from this information? So it's, the one thing that I can identify is that we probably need to determine what, what to do with the new Southridge area because we know that is, there's a higher likelihood that there's going to be apartments built there. So that seems like more of a priority or something that needs to happen next. And some of the other information is to keep in the back of our minds as we start making other decisions. So like I said, what, what are the key takeaways from tonight's presentation?
I think there's two key takeaways. One, we have capacity for the projected potential new housing developments that would happen. And two, that we will need to plan for as they come along, when and where the students residing in those new housing developments will.
Attend school.
Attend school. And we are seeing a very low and slow and gradual increase in student enrollment. So this is not going to be a sudden influx of hundreds of students. It's showing an average of eight new students per year, which is actually a slower growth rate than we saw over the last 10 years. So we will be able to use these projections to help us advance our, to advance our process and know how to adjust our projections on an annual basis to accommodate through shifts in open enrollment. So I think those are the key takeaways. But the most important one is we have capacity.
And well, what's the impact like on the mill rate, though? I think I had spoken to you about that before. I think it kind of depends on like the.
Yeah, let's, let's take that in when we take a look at the TIP here because that is the other aspect of the housing development. It's beyond the students. It's about the tax implications. So we can do that on the next presentation.
Nick, you said there were 20% three-bedroom apartments, is that right?
I think it was 65% studio and one, 20%, two, and 15% three.
Only 15%.
I think it was.
Good memory.
Okay, yeah, that was good. And that's out of 780.
780, correct. Yeah, spread across three phases.
Is this slideshow, well, it's posted on our minutes if anyone would like to review it. Is that the only, only, I would just think this would be an interesting, I think a lot of people would be interested in, in reading or listening to this presentation, so just wondering where they can find it. Dr. Mitzik?
This presentation is under Agenda Item 5.1.
Okay, so just, all right, well.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Thank you for all of your work with this and for your diligence to Greendale. We really appreciate that. And your daughter's adorable.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate your time tonight. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Frozen washcloths.
All right. We're on to item 5.2, which is the Tax Incremental Funding District, otherwise known as the TID, I believe. TIP, TIP, right.
It's referred to as a TID, which is the district, and then the TIP, which is the tax implication. I think that's how I understand it these days. So Jonathan and I are going to share responsibilities, but I'm going to drive at the beginning here on process. So linked on the first slide of the packet is the full proposal for the Tax Incremental Funding District Number Six. Currently, there are, there are four open TIPS in the community and one closed TIP. So this is, this would be the sixth TIP for the village. The process to move forward on a TIP is that they begin with a joint review board meeting where they have the original proposal. Then it goes to a plan commission public hearing. Both of those happened on August 31st. And then following the public hearing, the plan commission considered the viability of the TIP on August 31st. And in that case, the public planning commission did move forward the proposal to the village board. Last week, Tuesday, the village board reviewed the proposal for a tax incremental funding district and unanimously approved a resolution establishing Tax Incremental District Number Six and moving the process forward to the joint review board for a vote. And so what we're going to share tonight is what the village board resolution included and what the joint review board does.
And you attended that meeting, correct?
I attended the village board meeting and I attended the original joint review board on August 31st. So AILERS is a public finance advisors group that did the work around presenting the TIP to the village and the projections that need to be done. So this is the concept behind a tax incremental funding district. A property starts at the blue, which is the base property value. Currently, the property that's being proposed is on the Boston Store, the former Boston Store site, and I'll come back to that, but it has currently a value of zero. Then, once construction begins, the property value is projected to increase and the amount that it increases above the base property is not taxed for the general tax levy. It is taxed and the increment is used to pay for the projects that are completed to support the growth on that. And then, once the increment is paid off, which can be for a maximum of 30 years, then the TIP returns to value and is closed and that value is actualized in the tax base of the community. So the concept is, is that the increased value generates tax revenue that is then earmarked and used to pay off improvements in that project. That's my understanding and I will let Jonathan correct my misunderstandings if that's not the case. Okay. So the property is at Southridge. The TIP is intended to do necessary infrastructure that will assist in the redevelopment of that site and provides a redevelopment opportunity that would allow for new residential growth, modern retail amenities, and new tax-based growth for the village. So the cost, so what is here, the preliminary projections, there are infrastructure construction that would be funded through taxpayer dollars that would come to $8.8 million. That is utilities, sidewalks, walkways, village green, and other natural spaces. The village incurred $550,000 in interest because they purchased Boston Store's ablated property and have carried the cost of the property for a little over a year, maybe two. And then there's been costs in planning and administration. So the total project TIP, the total cost of the project is $10,522,291. In addition to that $10,522,291, the development agreement in the contract for sale includes funding loans to the developer for land acquisition. And what is understood from the contracts or not just understood but articulated is that the developer will repay the loans and that none of the tax increment will be used to pay the loans. So the role of the schools in this process, it is, it is a village-directed project, so the village board did establish the Tax Incremental District last week, Tuesday. And our role in the process is to review the tax increment district. And that joint review board includes us, the Village of Greendale, Milwaukee County, MATC, MMSD, and a citizen member appointed by the village president and approved by the village board. Those are the six members of the board. Five of the members are the taxing authorities that are included in where the property is located. So we have one of six votes. I'm going to ask the Board of Education to advise our vote at the joint review board meeting on November 15th. The board, the board will take a vote to advise our decision on November 7th. So that gives you a couple of weeks to review the information that is shared tonight. The schools has one of six, oops. The schools is one of six and it requires a majority of the joint review board to pass. So only four of those six votes are needed to pass the tax increment funding. In that decision, there are three criteria being considered. Would the development at the site happen without tax increment funding? And that question has to be answered in order to make a vote on the joint review board. Do the economic benefits of the property increase property value, which is the form of increased property value sufficient to cover the cost of the improvement? And do the benefits outweigh the tax, the anticipated tax increment to be paid by property owners? Those are the three questions we're answering. The joint review board's not weighing in on whether or not it's the best project or it's there. These are the areas that we're considering when making that decision on the joint review board. And so what the, the school board will advise the district about that meeting.
And when is the meeting again?
Yes, absolutely. So I'm going to go a little bit here and I'm going to let Jonathan jump in whenever he is ready. Jonathan, Kathy, and I attended a meeting with the village management, the village president, to ask questions about the tax incremental funding district and the next portion of the presentation is truly about the questions that were asked and what we understand from the meeting and the documents that were shared publicly in the meeting and posted with the village.
So as a community member, Dr. Mitzik, I asked questions that we were, were participating about. So one of those questions is what is the tax incremental funding district and what do you propose here? So the development of that property would increase that value from zero to $100 million over the life of the TIP that was projected, that twenty-three-year time period? And would propel future development of the Southridge property? Do you want to go to the next slide then? The village conducted a survey and the feedback within that survey showed that it was going to be a support for redevelopment of the Southridge property. So we saw that opportunity and the feedback showed that there was limited input on the specific project, so we asked additional questions on that. That has to do with some logistics, the legality of negotiating a complex development contract, so those things don't happen in the public. But it has a general sense that the village can conduct that survey to get feedback on the desire of community redevelopment. But there is future opportunity to comment when that developer submits plans for zoning. So taking a look at some of the other TIPS, the Green Belt, TIP Number Four achieved projected value. This is actually the TIP that we referenced, the development that we referenced as we used the Roffer study and make analysis and comparison of what that could mean from a student enrollment perspective. So we asked the question, what is the value of the property? So as we've discussed, that's moved from a $15 million valuation in 2020 to $0 now that that has been taken over by the village. that that has been taken over by the village. So some of the questions we asked were about impact on service needs. So we're taking a look at the service needs within the village and schools. There's, we had questions about police and fire. So specifically on those questions, the village said that police increase was not expected, but that fire has a truck that will need a truck that can reach the top of that building. So there are neighboring communities that have taller ladder trucks and the fire department would do additional training to be able to support that development. It could also require some increase in fire and paramedic personnel. So as that development would go into place, as construction is going on, there would be some taxing authority that would be created for the village so they could do that revaluation and then add on any appropriate staffing. On the school side, the current projection is for 790 apartment units. And so we did a calculation using the Green Belt properties and that's at point 09 students per unit is what we see from that Green Belt. So if we use that same ratio, that gets us to 72 students and that matches up with the projections that Roffers came to and considering similar demographics of that development is what they're seeing within Green Belt. That's what they project. And so with that increase, there's certainly the question about what that means from a building capacity standpoint, but then there's a question about where will the funding come from for those students? So it's true that there can be a shift from open enrollment funding to local tax funding when we consider what you receive under the revenue limit for a resident student. Greendale's currently at $11,424 and when it's an open enrollment seat, that's at So it's a higher amount. And so the district engaged in some projections saying this is a hundred million dollar development. We project out 72 additional students. So while, while the TIF is in place, those additional, the additional valuation will not negatively impact the district from a state aid perspective. So you'll have a greater number of students, a growing number of students, and you'll also have additional state aid that's coming along with those students, which will have some netting effect overall. Once that TIF would be closed, all of that additional property valuation would need to come on the district property valuation rolls. And at that point, you could see an increase in taxes. So to do an initial projection, we saw that there's the potential of a 7.75% tax increase and you would also have a 5.87% increase in property valuation, right? So there'd be some shifting. If it's eight, you have 8% more in tax levy and about 6% more in total property valuation, everyone that's sharing in those costs, there would be some shift, but it did not raise at a significant level. This would not be significantly noticeable just from the school tax levy portion. And that's talking about the time at which that TIF would close. It's certainly a higher property valuation per student. The district currently sits at about $580,000 in property valuation per student. And that would mean that this development would need to bring about 160 to 170 students to maintain that ratio. And we're projecting about 72. So that's higher, but it's for a small portion of the community. As time would progress, if there were to be additional developments, and we certainly mentioned that here, that could add to that number. It's probably going to be higher property valuation per student. And then we continue, continue to do additional projections and updates. But in our analysis, using multiple assumptions, there was nothing that stood out that it would be that immediate major increase to our funding formula.
I can grab these.
Okay.
They have a little bit more detail. This is showing what the annual development assumptions are. So when you will see outlays of funds and what will happen and then what totals there are as we move through. So the infrastructure and developer construction is estimated to begin in 2024. The estimated 100 million to be created throughout the life of the tax incremental district. The total tax increment project revenue projected to be approximately 48 million through the life of the TIF. And those assumptions included an inflation rate of zero. So that means that if the property, that the, the projected value is based on today's dollars. So if there is increase in property value, that would be more revenue generated, a shorter timeline of the TIF, and it would close at, at an earlier date. So they have what they consider to be conservative estimates of future value of the property when the project is complete. That's essentially what this is, is showing. The project does include financing for the developer. Phase one would be a loan of $16,700,000. Phase two would have the same and phase three would have the same. When we met with the village, one of our key questions was if the village is taking out a loan to fund the developer, what guarantees do we have in place that it will progress as it is anticipated? And there are two safeguards in the contract. One is that the developer is required to take out a performance bond. So if they, there were to be a disruption or an abandoning of the project, that the insurance would pay off the loan, that performance bond would pay off the loan. And the second is that they must completely pay off the loan from phase one before the financing would be drawn for phase two. And so they, the, they would have guarantees to pay off existing loans through a performance bond through insurance. And then they would have completely paid off loans from the first phase before the second phase begins and completely paid off loans from the second phase before the third phase begins. And according to the village, at the end of phase one, it would be a break even.
Okay, well, that sounds like good news.
So a quick review of the key ideas. The village approved the resolution establishing the tax incremental district on October 18th. The proposal is advancing to the joint review board for consideration on November 15th. And the Board of Education, that's you, will take an advisory vote at the November 7th meeting. And the vote will be based on those three decision criteria that we talked about. And I did link to the presentation if you'd like to review before making a decision. The entire joint review board manual and somewhere around page in the low twenties is the joint, is the criteria for decision for the joint review board.
Actually, if you step back one slide, we may have skipped over a couple of comments. So as we've mentioned, it's likely state aid rate and revenue limit would increase and those would offset. So during the time that the TIF is open, the revenues that they're, essentially the property taxes they're collecting on that property is going in to pay the debt for the upgrades that were made. And so while that's going on, there's additional revenue limit that's being accrued if their students were educating within the district. But we anticipate if those students are coming without that property valuation being on our total district property value, that will also add state aid that will help to offset those additional tax dollars needed to educate those students. So some offsetting there and then.
I'm sorry. So can I just, the revenue limit increase would come from the additional students that are coming from that development?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So then the district, just the last point is, once that TIF is opened, that would go on to, would be apportioned by the municipalities.
With that, we will take questions. Those questions that we can answer, we will. And those questions that we can't, we will find answers for you to inform your decision in two weeks.
Okay, so questions, anyone? A lot, a lot of info.
I think I've asked mine throughout the presentation, so thank you. The other thing that I just like to acknowledge is, I think early on, you, you talked about how Kathy, you and Dr. Midsick and Jonathan met with village manager and with village president. So I think that speaks volumes in the relationship between the schools and the, and the village. So thank you for that and thank you to them for accommodating, which I'm sure were lots of questions.
It's a good meeting.
Yeah, and I echo Clerk Creppito's comments because I know that you even missed, Dr. Midsick, you missed a, a school board event to attend a meeting, just so that we were very thorough in knowing exactly how this would impact the school district, so. So do you need a motion?
No, there's no motion tonight.
Informational, but want to make sure.
It does make me feel a little bit better that there's like the performance bond requirement out there and that they have to pay off like phase one before phase two because, I don't know.
Sense of security.
Every day.
All right, we're, we're not voting until November 7th.
Yeah. So this is for, this is information for you to digest, process to make a, a decision on how you would advise our vote at the joint review board.
And, and as Dr. Midsick said, both the new village manager, my cause, as well as President Jason Siborowski are very open to any questions. So obviously, any questions that we have, we can direct to Dr. Midsick, to Jonathan, and likely any questions that we need to get answered from them will also be able to be answered. But I again also appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I, I know there's a lot of foresight here. We're not, you know, like, this is not happening upon us, but we're actually part of the discussions. So I think that's very important. Obviously, our vote is important on the 7th. So, so with that said, is there any other thoughts or anything? Board member Koblosk, anything? No, all right. All right, so we will come back to this item on November 7th for a vote. In the meantime, just bring any questions before Dr. Midsick or Jonathan Mitchell. So we're on to number 5.3 now, which is also informational. It's the early college credit program approvals for the spring of 2023.
All right, so this is, I think this is for Tasha and Rob. This is the first time that you guys have seen this. This is around our dual enrollment students and students who are taking classes through M A T C or Marquette or W C T C. And we are always increasing this number, which is really positive for our students. We have nine more students than we did last year that are partaking in this. And the counselors and the lead on this, Chris Mensch, who is a guidance counselor as well, he works with students to ensure that they know that these are different options for our students and our students are taking advantage. And I, every year, will give information of the students that are taking these classes and which classes that they are taking. So if there's not any, if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Maggie.
It is worth noting that it is statutorily required that we approve early college credit for students who make the request and we do not have comparable onsite programming. However, we have also promoted some of the dual enrollment academies that you've heard a number of presentations about. So that is why there's no action required because it's statutorily required. We inform the board rather than asking for a vote.
Is that Calc class, is that the Calc B C?
Yes.
Okay.
When you look at this listing, are there any course offerings that you're tracking to say, you know, this might, there might be an opportunity for us to offer this in-house in the future?
Yes, I'm actually meeting with Tom Herman, who came this beginning of the evening to speak to you all. We're meeting about that exact same thing. Once there is enough students who are taking a specific class, really thinking about how we can utilize that. And we're having that conversation and that's something that we're always reflecting on as a team.
And these are classes that are being, or courses that are being offered outside, you know, by usually like a secondary school. This does not include those courses that are offered through our consortium with St. Francis and Greenfield and, is that correct?
That is correct. And it does not include any of our AP classes, our CAP program, our U W Green Bay offerings. The students of Greendale have so many different offerings to ensure that they're ready for life after high school.
There are two programs, however, that we do have sufficient enrollments that it is the contracted price with M A T C is adjusted down, making it comparable to an onsite course. And that is C N A and the L P N. That within our consortium, there are enough students that is, it is a high school only offering and their cost is no longer per pupil, but the cost of the staff member. And so it does reduce our cost on those two programs. And it would be cost prohibitive to bring in-house because we don't have the onsite equipment, but the cost of instruction is comparable to a class offered in the high school because we have expanded to the point within the consortium to offer an exclusive section.
And early college credit, another huge advantage is that students are earning high school credit and generating a college transcript. So if they would continue on at M A T C or at Marquette or they already have college credits that they didn't have to pay for. So there's a financial gain for the student. There's a, certainly an academic gain. They have the experience of being on a college campus and exploring courses that may or may not be in their career future. So it's, and, and I know M A T C for sure has, offers a program where, where they'll certify a high school teacher in, in a, in a coursework, you know, a course offered at M A T C. So then there could be an onsite high school teacher that's sort of duly certified teaching the M A T C curriculum to, in our example, the Greendale students. So it's, it's an amazing program, early college credit.
We did meet with M A T C about that possibility and we had concerns because M A T C controlled the curriculum and to the point that we would have to purchase the textbook required by M A T C, whereas our partnerships with the University of Wisconsin, Ashkosh, and the University of Wisconsin, Green Bay, allow us to align outcomes. And then the, our local teacher has, is an adjunct professor who has autonomy to choose the book and to meet those outcomes in ways that they plan and design for their students. So we have opted not to transition from U W Ashkosh and U W Green Bay to M A T C because of the tight restrictions from M A T C that the departments have over textbook selections and course syllabus.
It all comes down to curriculum in the end, right? Every, every educational battle ends at the curriculum line.
So I had a question. Transportation-wise for this, the students are responsible for their own transportation.
That is correct.
So there, so is that a barrier for any of our students or how does that work?
I am not, I wasn't prepared to answer that question, but I can look into that and get back to you. I do know that a lot of students are taking those early morning classes and do first or second hour release so that they can plan that way.
Okay, so they're starting there and then coming to us?
Correct. Or at the end of the day. It's kind of the way most students do that.
I know if a student had an I E P plan that required transportation, that we make those plans and accommodations for whatever that programming is going to be.
I actually had a question about a couple of the classes on here. So for fall and spring, it says that there's a calculus class. And last year I took Calc B C virtually. And I guess I was just wondering how the college actually offering the class in person would be different than, than me taking it as an AP class virtually?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I, it's numbers, how many students and looking at it from where we're getting, and Kim, you could help. from where we're getting, and Kim, you could help me with this too, because I'm still learning this, the Calc BC world. First, we want to see if we can run it ourselves and see if there's enough students to make that happen. Then there's, depending on numbers, are we going to have the support to run an online class where we can have onsite teacher to support, and that was what was last year. That was not the case for these students, so that's why they did it through this avenue.
However, if the ones that are University of Wisconsin system, those are online classes. So, some students have chosen onsite, and some students have chosen online, depending on their preferred delivery method.
So, if a student chose like an online way, like, do you just block out periods where they're here at the school, and they like teach themselves how like, as independent study?
Some choose to have a study hall where they insert that course, and some choose to add it on top of their already full schedule. So, it is really based on how they set it up.
Is that available for like every single class, or is that just?
No, it's only available for classes that are not offered.
What do you mean by that?
So, if you can't get the coursework here at Greendale?
Okay, so like a student couldn't choose, like, I understand, like, I should, it's like a better option, or not, like ideally, like, to happen at wherever the college?
Well, like Chinese or?
So, like, if you wanted to take band at a school, we have band. So, you can't take that.
But if like a student had a transportation problem, and they would rather like try to take the class, not virtually, but independent studies, like still be involved in whatever curriculum that the school's offering, could they do that from here instead?
That is a different program. Yeah, that's a different program in terms of independent study, and we do have policy around that. No one has asked for that recently.
I know it's not completely the same as taking it through the college, but last year, when I did take Calc BC virtually, because it wasn't offered at the school, because there wasn't enough people signed up, they did just block out a study hall during the day, and they gave, there were two study halls, because we had seven people, so one had three people and one had four, and what we did was, we would just kind of work together on the curriculum. And so that way, if we had any problems or questions with what we were learning, we could kind of work with each other. And then, weekly, we would meet with Ms. Tarnowski, and we would discuss with her what's happening. And I don't know if it's completely the same for the college, for the classes that are offered directly through the college, but at least with Wisconsin Virtual School, that's how it worked when we did it.
Those are some good guidance counselors, school counselors with the creative scheduling.
Well, thank you for sharing that, too.
Yeah, that's really good input.
Here, here that you're utilizing that.
I think that it also is worth mentioning that, you know, not every, every student at a college preparatory high school chooses to go to a four-year university. And so, that's why courses like these, these MATC courses, are quite valuable as an option. They, you can also take Gen Eds. You can get your, you know, a lot of students choose to get their first two years of general education credits done at a community college, and then transfer to one of the UWs. So, that's another advantage of the early college credit program, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other board members? Good? All right, we will, thank you for that report. Thank you, Maggie Olson, as well. So, we're on to item 5.4, which is the legislative update. Board Treasurer? Hughes, do you have anything to share with us?
Yeah, I have a few updates. There, and I think you may know about this already, Kathy, there was 90 million in federal funds that came to our state, and the governor decided, it's been split, 75 million of it is being based per pupil, so an averaged $91.15, which allowed our district 228,000 of these funds. The funds are to be used to retain staff, help with cost of supplies, classroom support, learning loss, busing cost increases. There is also another 15 million of the rest of it for what they called Get Kids Ahead, and it's for mental health services, and Greendale was allotted 43,000 for that. There was a special report about the unfunded special education cost burden on Wisconsin, on the Wisconsin school districts. Many of the districts are having to divert their funds from their general education funds for the special ed funding. There is a new report that stated collectively, in this state, we faced a 1.25 billion underfunded amount in special ed costs in 2019 to 2020, and that was up from one, about 1 billion in 2015 and 2016. And as Jonathan pointed out before, I think we're paying about two-thirds of that. So, when I looked up the numbers, I think in 2019, our like burden was about 3.8 million, and now it's about 4.1. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Also, WASB has a resolution out there, number 2.31, and they are asking for reimbursement rates to increase for special ed funding to 45% by 2324, 60% by 2425, and 90% after that. But I'm not sure where they will get that. The number of revenue limit, revenue limit referenda is at an all-time high. So, in total this year, they will have had 92 referendums in the state of Wisconsin, and those referendums are seeking additional operating revenues just to run their school districts. What else do they have? Just that, another interesting point is that the Wisconsin state tax burden is dropping again. So, this, there's no other state that is seeing a greater drop. Wisconsin is ranking, as Jonathan pointed out, as far as student spending, we're 48th per, in percentage per student spending in this, like in the country, even though our, like Wisconsin, our local taxes, a share of our personal income has dropped, and we are nearly the largest nationally, but then our per pupil spending is dropping as well. And I think that was about it.
Thank you. That was, I appreciate you giving us that update. All right, we're going to move on to 5.5, which is the board committee update. So, we have policy, I don't know, anyone have anything from your committees you'd like to share right now?
And the, I mean, the policy committee did an extensive update at the last meeting with the NEOLAs, adoption of the NEOLA policies, so we'll be working long and hard all year to, and we look forward to updating the board as we go.
We're meeting in early November.
November 5th, Saturday, to work on policies. So, all, it's, people are welcome, but it's, you know, really the work of this committee. We hope to move quickly and efficiently and excitedly towards these NEOLA policies, because they'll be easier for everyone to access.
And the, the public will be able to access them, right, on the NEOLA site as well? Is that correct?
And cross-reference. You know, if you're looking for what's the policy on, you know, chewing gum in school, you know, and you would just type in the topic, and yeah, it will cross-reference all the policies that relate to that topic.
And we're moving from the hundred series to the thousands with the new one, right?
I'm not positive on the numbering yet, but.
Yeah, we'll continue to provide updates.
Yeah.
And just so that the public understands, every, every new policy, once it goes into NEOLA, we will bring to the board to review and approve. So, it's not like we're just going to shift NEOLA and slide in a new verbiage. We're going to shift to NEOLA and then approve, review and approve that new policy.
So, that'll take some time to do.
It'll take some time.
As we reported at the last meeting, you will adopt the book all at once. So, the, as series are reviewed, you will tentatively approve, but it will all transition simultaneously. So, we're not put in two worlds.
Yeah, next summer. So, all the current policies, this is your last year of running, and then the summer, we'll adopt the new, we'll ask the board to adopt the new NEOLA policies, and then we'll be on board with NEOLA fall of 2023.
That is on November 5th or 6th?
5th, I think. It's a Saturday.
Which is a Saturday. So, I will, I'll be at the Policies and Resolutions up in Stevens Point that day. So, unfortunately, I will not be able to be at that meeting, but I will.
But did you want to comment on our resolution for the record?
Yeah, since we are on committees.
I don't, yeah.
But before, but before we do, I was going to see if anyone else had anything from there. And we have the Time for Learning, the, I'm trying to think of all of our, our committees are really committee of the whole for the most part, but the.
Yeah, the Board, the Park and Recreation Department.
Park and Rec, yeah.
We did not meet this past month.
Okay, okay. And then I was just going to mention, and maybe Mr. Mitchell could touch base a little more, because I had to teach, or I wasn't able to stay in the full SWSA meeting, but we are meeting once a month. We do have a new executive director. Anything highlighted from that, Mr. Mitchell?
They're talking about planning for advocacy during the state budget cycle. So, after the election for governor and the new elections for the state senate and assembly, it'll be more clear than what, solidifying what talking points that group wants to use, and then trying to provide messaging that's consistent for legislators as we talk about budget advocacy for the 2325 biennium.
And they did highlight the importance of us having that good working relationship with our legislators, and which I think in general Greendale has in the past. Representative Skoronsky has come to a number of our meetings. Senator Bradley is very accessible, so. So, you know, that, it's good that you pointed that out. We'll just have to keep those lines of communication going, because there will be a new assembly rep for sure coming in the district, actually two now, because Greendale's been split into two districts. Anything else? So, just a quick note with, with the Policies and Resolutions Committee that I serve on for WASB, last, this past month, when I went to Madison, it was a Friday and Saturday. I had laryngitis the whole time, which is all right, but we did discuss, there are approximately 25 resolutions that will be coming before us this year. So, we'll get that prior to January, I think is when we have to come, yeah, before the delegate assembly, which I think Treasurer Hughes, you're the delegate this year, right, or is it?
Right, I think it's the 18th.
They, I think it's the 18th, yes. So, so those 25 will be coming before us, and then we'll, as a board, give you direction as to how we would like to vote on those. With that being said, we did have the proposal that Vice President Grogan and I wrote up regarding the learning loss, and we were not able to pull it all together before the 15th deadline. But with my being on the board, I was able to at least introduce it at the meeting in Madison. All of the board members that are delegates, or not delegates, but on that committee unanimously approved it going forward to the full delegate assembly. So, there, there was some language discussion about taking out the word COVID, because COVID will not necessarily be the only thing that could potentially cause learning loss, you know, going down the road. But overall, it does impact every district in the state, and so everyone felt it was worthwhile for our lobbyists to take before Madison, when he does do his lobbying. So, so that will also be one that will be presented. I'll probably be the one presenting that, because I get to pick, and so I said I'll pick Greendale. I don't know if we've ever had a resolution go before, so it is kind of exciting, just, you know, that one of the districts had seven of them, I think. But the, the big key takeaway from the whole resolutions and policies is that they're trying to make it so that districts are not mandating to other districts what to do. So, it's really something that will benefit districts, but not telling us how to do our operations. So, that's something to know about that.
I apologize. Have we seen that resolution, or could we bring it forward?
Yeah, sure, I can.
And it's, and it's, is it in the final form? I mean, I have the draft.
I never saw the final draft.
Oh, you have the final draft, I think.
I, I'll get the final draft out to you.
So, I think that would have to go through Dr. Midsick to send out, is that?
Yes, I have not seen the final draft.
Yep, happy to share that.
And I don't, because you saw the original, you were on the original, correct?
I, I have never seen a document. I've seen some text.
Yeah, on September 7th, you had, you saw a draft.
There was some text and email, but I never saw revisions to that draft.
Okay.
Okay.
Happy to share that.
All right.
You may want to bring it to a board meeting, too, so that the community knows what we're, what we're.
Spearheading?
Yeah.
We can add that. If you get me the draft, I can put it in the district update this week, and then I can put it on the agenda for the 7th.
Okay.
All right, all right. Then, moving on, we have our, 5.6 is our Board Calendar Review. So, we do this annually?
No, the Board Calendar Review, it links the calendar of reports, but it's also to review social events where more than a quorum of the board may be present. And upcoming in the next two weeks, there are a number of events in the school and school community, including the Fall Play before our next meeting that was mentioned. And if there are other events where a number of board members may be participating, that is helpful on the Board Calendar Review. I don't know if there's a, there's no concerts, but there are some other.
There's, don't you have your fall break coming up?
There is no school on Thursday and Friday. There are teacher conferences on Wednesday at many of the schools.
Wednesday?
This Wednesday, the 26th. So, if you are, there may be people in and around the schools for conferences.
So, we'll, we'll continue to communicate if there's anything else going on. Do we, do we post for things like, you know, the, I know we do for 4th of July. Do we post for other community events, like Dickens of a Christmas, that kind of thing? Because there's a likely chance that at least three of us will be down there.
If you are anticipating going to a large-scale community event like that, it is helpful that you communicate that information with Sue. And if she receives that information from multiple board members, she will make sure to post potential social interactions.
Because Greendale, as we know, has a lot of those kind of events, so I think, you know, to be safe, we'll probably make sure that we're continuing to.
I will try to catch as many of those as possible and put them in the district update to remind you to let Sue know if you are attending, so that we can post if needed.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sue, for always being that person to put it out there. So, good. Anything else with the Board Calendar Review at this point then?
Do you know when all those resolutions are like put together for, so we have a work session?
Yes, they will be ready for us, but we usually take a look at it on January 9th. And I think you are traveling. They will be available before that in the board packet, but the board will.
Discuss them.
They'll discuss them at the January 9th meeting, so we'll make sure you have the information from that discussion.
And it can be a little intimidating, because it's an entire booklet, but typically, there's like a synopsis, the rationale, you know, things that. Access, okay.
Knowing where you're going, don't. I said, knowing what you're doing, don't.
All right, so there's no other discussion on the Calendar of Review, then we are at the end of our, well, not the end of our meeting, our additional comments and questions from visitors. I don't see we don't have any more tonight, so I think we are at the end of our meeting. We are going to be adjourned until November 7th at 7:00 PM. So, thank you for joining us tonight. Did you have anything? Sure, go ahead. I just noticed you look.
Um, I just going, I really don't want to hold anyone else later tonight, but I just had, I don't know if I missed the answer to my question, or if I just didn't word it correctly. So, going back to agenda item 5.3, what I was saying is like, or asking really for the idea if we could have almost like an independent study version of those classes at the high school, because I was thinking like that would open it and like appealed to a lot more students, because it's a lot easier just for the convenience of transportation, and like some of these are farther or like out of the way, especially with considering like traffic and stuff like that, like making it on time and back on time to school. So, that's what I was like trying to get at. that's what I was like trying to get, if it's a possibility to have them at school.
Yeah, maybe you'd have to talk to those colleges, right?
The colleges would have to be willing to offer a remote option.
Yeah, but that is an excellent question, because of the transportation barrier.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, yeah.
Sure, okay, so we are at the end of our meeting, we'll see everyone on November 7th at 7:00 PM, thank you.